Have to take that entire time. We are a little bit behind and so if we've adequately exhausted the topic then we can move on to the next item so that we can manage our time well and give necessary time to areas that might require a bit more time. So, thank you for that consideration on the front end. Item 3.01 Transformation Update. Dr. King.
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Transformation update will consist of three items. Lafayette Winona update followed by open campus and the transition timeline and will be concluded with additional items of interest related to the educational planning study that was done last year through Deion Richter. With that said, we'll begin with our Lafayette Winona update and we have with us Dr. Charbonne, of course Executive Director, and Mr. Schmiegel. So, I will defer to the two of you.
Great. Thank you. First, let me thank you for the opportunity to address you and also thank you for the opportunity to lead this building as we move forward. And I'm here today to give you a brief update on the transformation initiative that we have here. And I want to also thank Dr. Charbonne who has been a great partner, working with me hand in hand as we transform this building. I just have one little personal note. In fifth grade, I was inspired by a teacher to get, and I loved plants, and I wanted to be a botanist when I left fifth grade. So, if you see a hint of that in the presentation today, now you know where that came from. And if you come to Lafayette, you will see that I am slowly moving the fake plants out of the building and replacing them with live plants.
Yes.
So, just a little hint of that in there. Also, if you go by the building, you'll see on our marquee Transformation Initiative in Progress to let the community know that we are moving forward with this. So, back in March of 2014, Deion Richter made the recommendation to close Lafayette for one year, for a minimum of one year, name and rebrand the school and that it should have a specific focus with the purpose of attracting students from all over the division and that the leadership and staff would have professional development that would create a successful management choice environment for the students. They also chose this building because of its geographic location in the center of the city, basically. So, today I'm going to update you on the first three phases of this transformation. And so, the first phase that we've begun is Phase One, which is an evaluation of the existing building. We have to fully prepare this building for transformation. As you know, it was served as a middle school and we are going to be adding elementary school students to this. So, part of that process is looking at the existing building and how we can outfit this for elementary school. Phase Two is the formation of what is called a SPMT, a School Planning and Management Team, which will help with the guidance of the academic program and the student selection criteria. And then Phase Three is the new and innovative identity. The naming and rebranding process will be established during this phase with community input. So, starting with Phase One, and I'll just touch on some brief points as Dr. Houston has asked. If you're not familiar with the building, it is three stories. The first floor really does not have actual classrooms. It's, they're specials or electives classrooms. So, this is where your gym, your PE, your health, art classrooms are. So, this is interesting because in most schools, elementary schools, your lower grades are on the first floor. And so, we've had to look at the second floor and the way Lafayette is designed, we do have the option of one wing of being third through fifth grade, sixth grade on one wing, and then on the third floor, seventh through eighth grade. There are a total of forty-seven classrooms in this building. And as I explained earlier, the building was designed for middle school students. And so, we're currently looking at the classroom space. Third graders do not use lockers. They use hooks and cubbyholes. And the classrooms don't have hooks and cubbyholes. So, we will be moving forward with looking at those, just to give you an idea of how you retrofit a classroom. We did a walk-through this Monday. Dr. Charbonne, Dr. Simmons, Facilities Management, joined me and we went through the building and identified any issues that are there. I am finishing up a punch list room by room of what needs to be done. The painters have already been out. So, we're excited about that transformation already happening. And thank you, Dr. Simmons, for leading that effort. Phase Two is the formation of the School Planning and Management Team, and I'll just spend a little bit of time on this. Yale School Development Program developed a model, which I'm very familiar with. Actually, as a student at Norview High School, I served as a student representative on a SPMT. And so, it's neat years later to be able to form my own SPMT and bring that in, in this model. The principal of the school actually does not serve as the chair. They partner with the chair. So, this committee will eventually elect a chair to be a partner with the principal as we move forward with this. They, there are some specific responsibilities of this committee and I won't read them to you. You can see this. And if anybody's interested, I did send a chapter to read to Dr. Houston. In fact, all of the members who've been invited to this committee have received that chapter to read. That's their homework to do. So, the SPMT is designed to include all aspects. It's not supposed to be too large. It's supposed to be a right size. So, you'll see that we've included school-level officials, which would be myself, and my one major staff member, which is a head custodian, will be serving with me on this. The CAB executive members, we have members from Curriculum and Instruction, Higher Education, Political, General Community, we have future parent, and Business Community. So, I've recommended the following individuals with some additions, recommendations from Dr. King and his cabinet. I want to focus a little bit on the external representation. I'm happy to say that Dr. Bob Spina, who is the interim chair for this new STEM department at Old Dominion University, has agreed to serve on this committee and is actually looking to form a partnership as a possible training ground for science, technology, education initiatives. So, we're excited about this. We have asked for somebody from the downtown business community to be part of this. Mr. Bishop has always been supportive of the school community, but we've asked for a designee from the organization to serve on this. Two community members went from the general and business, a future parent, the state delegate who represents the school, the, where the physical location of the school is, and the city councilwoman from that, and also a school board member to act as a liaison to that. I did, I sent an invitation letter to Dr. Houston to discuss that with you and Dr. King on your choice to serve on this. Hopefully, you'll make that quick. Our first meeting is next Friday. So, and you'll see various representation from the different departments. Just to show you an example, working with Dr. Birdsong, she's recommended Sonya Hale to serve as a representative from Human Resources because as we look, we move forward with staffing this building, this will be a delegate process. It may require a different process than what we have right now with transfer process. So, we need that input from our HR folks. We also have asked for a K-2 principal to serve on this, knowing that an entry point in this building is third grade. There's an opportunity for our K-2 schools to make that recommendation to the students to come to this building as a third grade in that entry point. Did anybody have any questions at this point before I move on? Yes?
On with your School Planning and Management Team, I think I served on one of those too when you were, when you were a little boy.
Yes.
And...
And we still look the same. We still look the same, right?
Yeah. But with the Yale model, I thought they tried to have more balance and engagement with parents and community members. And just looking at your structure, I know you have the one future parent, a couple of community members. Is there any consideration or did you give consideration to having a better balance? And part of why I ask that, when we started discussing the transformation and we had the public hearing at Winona, we had a lot of parents that came out and expressed interest and wanted to be a part of it. And then I know like the Fairmont Park Civic League, they had started a education committee where they were inviting principals from the different schools in that area to be a part of it. So, did you give any more thought to trying to have more community engagement? Is it possible to have more community engagement without disrupting your model?
Sure. There is. And I'm open to the possibility of adding more. Now, we have to be careful with growing this committee too big. And there will be multiple opportunities to engage the community as we move forward in the phases. And there'll be subcommittees that will form off of this. The SPMT model is interesting in this situation because we don't have an active school building with teachers and parents because you also have teachers in this. All of the members on here are currently going to serve a one-year term. And the SPMT will move to a school-based model when it opens in September, which will include faculty, parents, and community members in that aspect. And it will be a much smaller group. But yes, there is an opportunity and that's something that Dr. King and I can continue discussing. I'd love to have more involvement, but we just need to be careful with growing this too big.
Just want to follow with the IB component. Dr. Savigny and I used to try to attend Norfolk Sister City meetings until they were always on the same days as our work sessions. But I know that Norfolk Sister Cities has always been interested in being engaged. And then also, you know, I know at Granby you have the NATO involvement. So, I know you mentioned the STEM piece, but that might be something we want to consider with the IB piece.
Absolutely. The world piece is definitely important to include them. And it's a tremendous opportunity as we move forward in the application stage for IB to include them. And that, that's a great recommendation. Finally, if you, sure I got the, Phase Three, this is the name and rebrand the school. Now, this came from Deion Richter. This is their exact statement, "Name and rebrand the school to approximately reflect the new identity of the school." The school board policy is on here, FFA, which allows you to make the final decision in the naming of this building. And we will continue moving forward with involving the committee and making recommendations of how we can involve in the community and bringing that to you as we move forward. We are on a slightly, a pressing timeline with this as applications for programs in the district generally start up in early winter. And so, we will need to be able to have the final name and identity of this building completed so that we can go out and advertise this to the community. And so, we will be bringing that for you. You'll see me again. And hopefully, the chair of the SPMT will be there with me at that time to present our recommendations for that.
Talking about the name, according to...
And I did take a look at the policies. And actually, we have two policies on the books that we really need to consider. And so, I'll be asking the policy committee to take a look at it, like the CFZ as well as FFA. And they're kind of conflicting in nature. And so, I'll ask the policy committee to take a look at those. And as soon as we can, if we can reconsider them so that we decide on exactly how we want to operate as a board relative to that.
Just to note, the FFA one that is being presented here in the presentation is the more current that was passed last year, September of thirteen. The previous version was August of six. So, perhaps it was just not deleted as it should have been. So, again, it's just a policy committee discussion that needs to take place. Jack, you got that one too?
I do.
And we'll expedite that because I do understand the time sensitivity of this process.
Yes.
So, just for clarity, moving forward with the committee and doing the work, then does that mean that the committee can move forward with discussion of the whole naming and rebranding with the intent of bringing recommendations to the board or with the board request that the committee wait until the board does an analysis?
I wouldn't suggest, I wouldn't suggest that. I would say unless there's some objection on the board, that the committee, you know, continue on. We don't want to hold up the progress.
Right. Okay.
So, we'll work on the policy. They work on the recommendation.
Okay.
I have a question that relates to that because it goes to the timing. If you had your dream, when would you want this renaming to have been concluded and the school board to vote?
Second week of October.
Okay.
But that's a tight timeline.
No. I wanted to know what your dream was.
Well, and I'll be working with Dr. Savigny too because a lot of this, as we apply to reopen the building with the state and working on contracts to order furniture and things, the building needs to have. And there's so many things that have to move forward and you need a name. Application process for IB or grants and things. So, it makes it difficult when you apply to go to an IB conference and you don't have a name of a building. So...
Because of that, I think we ought to just rock and roll.
Yeah. And we have a work session on October 1st, Wednesday, October 1st. I don't see why, but that particular policy, we shouldn't be, you said, second week?
Yes.
In October. Okay.
So, my question is to respond to...
Yeah.
To respond to Dr. King.
Work on it on the first and then go down around the third week.
We can get you the recommendations from the committee before then.
Because we need time for the committee to...
Yes.
Did you get the response you needed, Dr. King?
Absolutely.
And just to end...
Yeah. And it's such a simple policy. Yeah. So, we'll be, we'll be fine. We'll get with the policy committee directly after this meeting. And I mean, this is one of those simple, I mean, it really is in terms of how we operate the board on that. So, I'm confident that we can turn it around.
Great. Thank you for the clarity on that. The final is just to show you how we've had some general phases and this could change as the SPMT develops a timeline for this. So, I've gone over the first three phases. With Phase Four is really the meat of this building, which is going to be designing the academic program and the student entrance requirements for this. And with the expertise of this committee, I, we, we have to have this done by November to start advertising this. So, that will be the meat of this project. Phase Five will be working with Human Resources on the staff application process and the student application process. Phase Six is the selection process of the students through a possible lottery system. And then Phase Seven is hiring of staff. And then Phase Eight is Deion Richter recommended the staff professional development that would be required for this, including funding for that staff development, IB funding. IB training is expensive. And so, we'll be bringing those recommendations to you as we move forward. And then we will be opening in September of 2015 with 650 smiling faces. Any questions? And Dr. Charbonne can try to answer any other questions.
Just a request that the naming, branding options that you bring to us, that you'd be prepared to explain how they reach the goals and missions of everything that you wish. I think moving quickly is good, but I would love to hear your dream and your colleagues' dreams of how that name and that brand accomplishes all that you wish to accomplish.
Absolutely.
So, is the goal to open up Winona with students in every grade level on day one or to matriculate students in grades three, to eventually grades five, and then grade six on like two simultaneous programs going on?
Following Dr. King's vision, we would open up with every grade level.
Okay.
You have two entry points, which is third grade and sixth grade. Dr. Charbonne have discussed that those will be your two largest grades, possibly four to five, third grades, four to five, sixth grades. That's where you're going to have the most interest. It's a little bit harder to attract students when they've already established at a school, but we feel confident that we'll be able to offer two to three, fourth, fifth grades, and seventh and eighth grades. My magic number is, Dr. King said, is 650 students. And we're going to stick with that plan. And that gets us to that, that plan. Also, when it comes to staffing, we need to have full staff in place. So, we need those bodies and those chairs.
And one more point, just so that we are clear with parents, when they are hearing International Baccalaureate and they apply to send their child there, they need to know that what are they going to be getting out of the program certificate-wise? So, is it necessary for them to complete grades three, four, and five and get one certificate and then six, seven, and eight and get a different one? So, when the committee comes together and then we're talking about how we communicate with the public, I think that's going to be very important. So, that way they don't say, well, my student's going to go there for seventh grade and they're going to come out with an International Baccalaureate certificate, which I don't know that to be the case, but just for example.
Yes. You're exactly right. And there is a process that we have to follow. IB was a recommendation for this school, but the SPMT will then end up looking at all this. We purposely put the IB coordinator from Granby on this to look at extension programs from the high school into the middle school program. And so, those are things that will be worked out as we move forward with this. I'm hearing possibly a volunteer for the committee.
I could double as the parent and the, and the school board member.
There you go. There you go, Rodney. That's her.
So, two questions. I think we do need to be considerate of the fact that for the naming, the statement is the board will accept input from the public regarding the school name. So, I think we need to build that into the timing prior to the board taking a vote. And then, secondly, professional development, when and how early will that need to take place? And is that built into this year's budget for the amount of staff you need to train for IB?
I believe it is built in. The interesting part is that the hiring, including internal candidates, has to be done early enough that they will still be at other schools, but will be required to go through training as part of this. It will benefit them at their existing school as well. IB training is wonderful. I mean, it will help them, the rigor aspect of it. But it will then prepare them starting July 1st as we move forward with opening the building. They'll be ready to go with those concepts there. And I believe Dr. Savigny has money built in for this training.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're well-prepared so that the teachers are well-prepared and feel prepared going into the school year and not start July 1 when we have a new fiscal year.
The teachers and Mr. Schmiegel, there's training coming up shortly that he will have to attend.
I've already attended a mandatory training called Category One for a middle-years program that is required for the school leader when you apply for IB status. That the school leader has to go through that. And I've attended a full day with that. So...
Okay. Any others? Is it?
Did you say that 650 is the capacity of this, of this school?
We would like to open with 650. The capacity, I believe that building has a capacity of 1,100. But don't kill me in the first year. But I, we, it has potential to grow and we have the space to do that.
Rodney, do you have another question?
Just maybe a couple of statements in there, some questions. The, going back to the academic program and the student interest criteria and the branding. So, we started down the path with Deion Richter because as a board, we were having conversations around socioeconomic diversity. And we adopted the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community as part of our strategic plan. So, I think it's important that your team look at the diversity aspects of it as you look at your interest criteria and branding. And then on the, on the branding piece, I'm a little, you know, just going back to the conversation we were having earlier about the naming, I just want to throw out there that maybe it's two phases. You know, the initial school that will open next year would be a IB candidate school. But there's some type of programming that is going to be unique to that school that's going to align with the interest criteria and the things that parents are going to be applying to, to attend. So, is, could it be that the initial phase be whatever that special programming is or the candidate school? And then, once you go through the process of achieving the IB designation, then it would be rebranded and renamed around, around that? I'm not quite following the idea of doing the rush to get the name in October and what it is other than the name that we're, that we would be offering programmatically that provides the attractiveness to those that want to apply to the school and then have to go through the process of trying to become an IB school. If, I mean, if for some reason we did not become an IB school, then you still have to have some magnet or some, some programmatic specialty that I guess would be like we were IB but not really IB. You follow me? So, I would just like to get some, you know, whenever you come back, I think we really need to look at the programmatic piece during the candidacy phase and then the branding and the programmatic piece. We know what the program will be once we get the designation. But if you go through the process of changing the name but not really having a program to tie to, what is it that you're really branding other than the fact that it's a new name and it's a candidate school?
Right. Yeah, the, it is separating, in a sense, the naming and then the branding aspect of it. And the School Planning and Management Team, that's their role, is going to be looking at those programs that will best fit. That I don't know of any International Baccalaureate program in the country that actually has IB in their school name. It's usually a sub-headline to it or an academy institute, there's a center or part of those. So, those are things that could be easily implemented as we move forward. But getting the actual name on, of the school and then the sub-headline can come later. You're, that is a possibility. But the School Planning and Management Team is the one that will guide that process. And looking at the programs, the first two presentations that we will be looking at as we move in the Phase Four, what is IB? What does it mean? And looking at STEM-type concepts as part of this as well. And that's why it's great that Dr. Spina has agreed to be part of this because that's what they're doing at ODU, as well as Rebecca Gardner from Granby has a huge interest in this because the potential of future candidates for the IB program, they don't necessarily have to go into the IB program at Granby, but we want to make sure that we are creating a pipeline that these students are prepared for an IB program at the high school level. But you, you're correct. There is a little bit of a separation with that, but the School Planning and Management Team will be, need to be the ones that will end up deciding that.
Okay. So, what would be the likelihood that we wouldn't get the certification though for three IBs?
Well, it...
I understand it's a process.
It's a two to three-year process. There's, we're looking into now, if I could briefly explain this. Granby does not have a ninth and 10th grade technically an IB program. It's called pre-IB, but that is actually the last two years of a middle-years program. IB is six, a middle-years program is six, seven, eight, and nine and 10, taking a test in 10th grade. Granby has a waiver to not test students in 10th grade because they automatically go into the IB diploma program, which is separate. We are looking into the possibility of just doing an extension into the middle-years program through this building, which other district, other districts, we believe, has successfully done if you have the right staff there, you have the right training in place. So, as we move forward, I'm working with the IB coordinator now. And from what I've learned from the training I've been to, that may be a possibility. If not, then you go through the candidate phase process and that the application, which is a two to three-year process of doing. And that would be for primary years as well. Our focus right now is the middle-years program because we look at that extension into the high school level as the easiest way to get that granted. But the IB program is the one that makes those decisions. And they are looking to expand in Virginia. Virginia does not have as many schools as other states. So, we have that opportunity. But we do have those items to look into as we move forward with it. I hope that explained that middle-years program.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Continuing over three point oh one.
Next is Open Campus and the Transition Timeline to be presented by Dr. Simmons and supported by Mr. Coleman. Dr. Simmons?
Thank you, Dr. King. Glad to hear it. So I will briefly go through the timeline in lieu of time, and you can ask questions if there are any. Last evening, when we presented over at City Hall, the mayor did ask, did we need additional funds? I'd like to assure the board that we do have the money budgeted to make the transition to Open Campus. The funding is there. When I mentioned additional funding, it was simply for enhancements that we could use in the building to provide more services to the children. But we are well within budget, and we intend to have the school opened on time. So the week of August twenty eighth through September seventh, we met with staff at Rosemont and staff at Coronado to talk about the transition, to discuss what the move might look like, what required space. We might need to transition from Coronado over to different areas, and so we are pretty much on target with that. We met with graduation coaches during this time, and we met with them before also, to identify and begin to identify and recruit children. So we're still working that process, and we will continue to do so. The director for Open Campus has been hired, and the highly qualified teachers have been hired, and the enrollment specialists from Magic Johnson's side has been hired already. September eighth through the fifteenth, we needed to restructure Open Campus facility prior to Magic Johnson's team coming in. That means that they need additional, and they pay for much of this, additional wiring for the computers, they have to put the furniture together. A schematic drawing has been done to determine where the furniture might go. All of that's been done. We need to carpet, retile, and make some other changes to prepare the building. That is happening right now, and some painting is being done also. Between September the eighth through the fifteenth, we hope to have that done. The week of September second through the fourteenth, and we are on time in terms of restructuring the Rosemont facility to accommodate the relocation of individuals and offices from Open Campus. We've done office design at Rosemont, and we are continuing to work that, and we are reorganizing the building also at Coronado. September seventeenth through the nineteenth, there already has been a walkthrough of the new Rosemont offices, and we have begun to pack materials so that we could relocate them. We're in the process of doing that. Magic Johnson's group will begin their campus staff training, some off-site, some onsite, for their, for their hires, and teachers will be trained also during the week of seventeen through nineteen of September. September nineteenth through the twentieth, this is going to be the enrollment open house dates for our students. So this will give them an opportunity to come and bring their birth certificates and other things, proof of residency, to make sure that we have the information that we need to truly enroll them, so we'll be verifying them for attendance. September twenty-sixth is a deadline for having all offices relocated, and we are relocating them in a staggered format. The week of September nineteenth through twenty-one, Magic Johnson's group will come in to occupy the building. When I say occupy, it means they're going to come in, they install their own desks in that open area where the lab will be, so they will do all of the work for that in collaboration with our team from Rex Gay's department. The telephone lines are being prepared now, the technology is being prepared. They provide the technology, but they're working very closely with Andrea and her team to make sure that their technology interfaces with ours seamlessly, and they will be using our student information system. September twenty-third through twenty-seven, we'll complete the final move-in, move-out for both campuses, the new Open Campus and the Rosemont facility. September twenty-fourth through twenty-fifth will be an orientation for new students, the first day that they'll come in and receive more information about their experience for Open Campus. By then, we will have completed final touches for both Rosemont and for the new Open Campus facility. September twenty-fifth through twenty-sixth is students' first day of school. All hands on deck at Rosemont. It'll be the first time that we receive students, and we will have a debrief on September twenty-sixth to see how well things went, what we might need to change or adjust. And on September twenty-nine is the first day, the students will be in seats for the formal count for ADM purposes, state purposes for funding. We will have an attendance on September twenty-nine, all one hundred and twenty-five students. This is a summary. It is not covering every detail that explains what we've done nor what we will do, and our group is remaining very sensitive to the Norfolk Public Schools staff that has to be relocated to another facility, and we are trying our best to do a seamless transition. John?
You covered everything very well. You know, on the staffing side, we, we do still have a counselor and a special education teacher to hire, but we expect to have that completed by tomorrow. As Dr. Simmons indicated, we have our graduation coaches making phone calls and trying to make contact with dropouts at this time, and so we're, we're looking to, you know, get those students committed to be able to come on the nineteenth and twentieth for the enrollment process. And so we're working very diligently on, on identifying those students that qualify and that can participate.
Any questions on, I'm scooting around in this chair.
Just a statement.
Yes.
I did not receive on August twenty-ninth a memo electronically, but I did receive a phone call, and when I received that phone call from Chairman Houston, I asked two major questions. Number one, the financial issue, and was told that it would not require any additional financing, and the second was about operational stuff. At that, later, more recently, I received the full memo justifying that. When I stated that I could support this temporary adjustment, it is still just that. I would hope that at some point in time, there may be a different location, but because of the nature of the field of dreams, this School of Dreams have started and they will come, in my opinion, I supported this to make sure that we got started in a timely way. But in no way do I see the final destination of this important initiative as necessarily being in the location it is, because as was mentioned yesterday by one city council member, proximity to transportation and, and, and public visibility, I think, may be different. So for me, my support for this is because this is a critical initiative that needs to address people who need to be helped, and we need to have it done now. But the financial piece, if that's in order, I'm still supportive. But long-term, I see the School of Dreams in a different place. No criticism of the location of Coronado, that's just where I see we need to get started. Thanks.
Thank you. Other thoughts, questions? Yes.
Yes, and at some point in time, I would like to see a revised budget. I know we had an original budget that we had taken the original vote on, but now with the building being moved and the expenses that are incurring from that, and I understand that it's still within our original budget, just to have a new budget as to what that will, that will look like. And also to reiterate, I had emailed Dr. Simmons two questions with regards to the average daily membership, and it's my understanding, her understanding as well, that as long as the students are in the seats on September the twenty-ninth, they will be recorded as present, and we will receive state funding for them. And I understand that to be the facts at this point in time. And then the second question that I had was-
Comment. Don has a comment.
Yeah, I think for clarification purposes, it's important that the board understand that when we have to report to the state our enrollment and on September thirty, or the last school day of the month of September, those kids along with all of the other K-12 kids that are enrolled, that's a snapshot on that day. But the actual funding is going to be based on the average daily membership from October one until March thirty-one. So it's not enough just to have a child enrolled on September thirty, but they have to be in school throughout that measurement period from October September thirty through March thirty-one. So a child come in, we put him on the road day one, September thirty, but if he or she does not come anymore, then we would not get money for that child.
Okay. And does it have to be the same student?
It has to be the aggregate of the enrollment on that time period. So if a child came in, and let's say he or she only needs to be in the program for three months.
Okay.
Or ninety days of the average daily membership. But if we had another child come in and he or she was in there to pick up for the next ninety-one through one hundred and eighty days, then the aggregate of the two would basically qualify for average daily membership throughout the year. But it's not just who is enrolled on day one, because if, if you recall, when we report to the board, the attrition from the September thirty enrollment compared to the actual March ADM, there's always attrition, because we're in a more transient population.
Right.
So again, probably more information than you asked.
No, that's exactly what I-
But if we have thirty thousand kids historically, traditionally on September thirty, our average daily membership is probably going to be about, historically, it's been about ninety-eight percent. So because we have a transient population. So it's not just a head count on that one day, and the state's going to give us a hundred percent of the funding. It's based on the average daily membership throughout that measurement period.
And I understand that we have a long list of students who would qualify for those services. Go ahead.
So that means that we must do our due diligence in partnering with Magic Johnson-Bridgeway to have a full caseload throughout. And by doing our due diligence, we should not have that issue because of the number on the caseload. We've got, we identified initially when we began to do this work in terms of dropouts over a period of time, about eight hundred students that were candidates, and then boiled that down to priority candidates. So by doing the work at the level that I see the committee doing it now, involving coaches and all of the other school-level officials and identifying the students, and understanding the, the significance in partnering with Magic Johnson-Bridgeway for this program is that their expertise is really centered on the attracting back the dropout student and that subgroup. So we have to have continuous oversight, partnering and, and authority over ensuring that those seats are always full, so that, and the reason that's important, in addition to your question, is that it also gives us the capacity to address more of the overage-for-grade middle school students, potentially, as well as more of the students that are behind on credits at the high school level. So the work has to continue with that cycle, give students, because the nature of these students many times is to be transient. So by partnering with Magic Johnson-Bridgeway, we hope that we, we can see that mitigated, but to continue to keep the seats full and, and possibly beyond that number that we have.
And the four thousand dollars per student is the four thousand dollars, if the student graduates early and somebody else comes in and takes their spot, it's still that same amount? It's not an additional four thousand dollars?
That's correct. It's a seat for a year.
Yeah, just a comment as relevant to the ADM. The contract, as I read it, requires not just one recruiter, but several recruiters, and that will, as that, as, as that capacity is filled, will help in bringing in more students. So I think it's a team of recruiters, as I read the contract, that will be looking for students to be a part of the Open Campus.
Okay. Any other questions on Open Campus? Yes.
Couple. Clarify again, what is a successful exit? What's considered a successful exit for the, the students that we recruit back for graduation, one group, and the students who are overage for grade? What's, what's considered a successful exit from, from the program?
I would say two answers for that. Successful exit would be graduation.
So in other words, they can earn a, a full diploma?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Another, and Dr. King can weigh in on this, another item for success would be a student that is overage for grade, that catches up really, really fast, or one that is five or more credits behind, that somehow is at grade level and wants to transition back to his or her high school. That probably won't be the case, based on what we've experienced, but if it is the case, we could fill that seat with another child, and then both children are happy.
So then, from a programmatic standpoint, more than likely, students who would start on October one, we're not, are we anticipating that they're going to, wherever they are in trying to achieve their full diploma, is the expectation that they will complete in a year, or they're just on a pace that it may be two years, it may be more than that in terms of what, what the expectation is for their successful exit?
It's customized for each child. There'll be some that we will be able to get on track very quickly, and there will be others that may be behind on credits by X number, so it has to be paced based on that student. So many, what, of course, you find is that many of these students that are behind is not because they can't do the work.
Right.
There are other issues that are, that are going on. When you customize the process in the way that we are, then it gives them a chance to accelerate the catch-up. Now, remember that we use a high school student for an example. It does not remove all of the accountable nature of the work that has to be done. So it includes the passing in of course tests, all of those things. So all of those things are, are part of this. And the whole, whole notion of partnering with Magic Johnson-Bridgeway with the rollout of the virtual technological support that's going to be there for those classes, it's linked to and approved by the state's SOL as well. So all those things meet. And so once a student is successful, the intent is for that student to have a high school diploma, and in many cases, as we evolve and expose them to various career introductory opportunities, so the notion is to see them graduate, not just graduate high school, that's major for us, but also potentially moving on, if it's college, if, if it's vocational technical school, or if it's into the world of work, with some readiness, that is the intent for the, for the student. It's paced though by the individual student.
So the Magic Johnson folks were here at the last meeting, and they were describing their recruitment process, and then I think they agreed to give us some data on what, a profile of their students, you know, how long it takes, when they come in, how long it takes for them to exit. I just think that's important, because I was also reading that the contract, and it's a series of one-year contracts, so just want to get an understanding of what's the likelihood of the students that we're recruiting are going to complete by the end of that first year's contract. We're going to find that we have a whole host of students that really need, need more time. And then just the, the other thing, the parking at the school. I know you have parking for staff, and there's a small parking lot in the back that's paid, I think. And then on the football field side, I know a lot of times during training, people would park on the grass there. So is, are there provisions being made to provide surface parking for, I mean, we talked a lot yesterday about buses, but the reality is you may have a whole, you may have fifty students that are driving there, and so the ability to accommodate those students without parking up and down Regent Road, which I know is going to cause a problem for the community. We need to have some type of consideration for where they would park, or even if you park, there's a church nearby that has a gravel lot, but I think that's something you also should, should look at.
I appreciate that. I accept that as noted, and Rex Gay has already begun the process of looking at the property to see what we can do to expand parking. It's not a part of the budget, but he has taken that into consideration also.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We are still a little behind, and so we're going to definitely need the quality time to, to catch up. I don't think we're going to need that time. Very good. Okay. Sam? Continue.
Great. The third and last component for three point oh one, I believe it is.
Yes.
Transformation update centers on the educational planning study. And so I would like to give the board- And so, I would like to give the board an update. This should be a review in terms of where we are, much of what you have heard, of course, links to this. All right. So, here, of course, we've talked about reconfiguration and the pairing of schools that has begun. We talked about the purpose there with the focusing on the pre-K two and what we intend to gain and secure. Remember, the whole notion for us at this point, after we have gotten some increases in the aggregate, is that we must accelerate the rate at which we increase the percentage of students that may even exceed standards. And of course, the whole notion of pairing allows us to focus on pre-K two and reading readiness and move forward to three, four, or five in terms of having students reading on grade level and above by the end of third grade. And of course, it goes without saying that all of the items that are required curricular-wise or linked to SOL would be a requirement as well. So, we are studying the Lindenwood-J Cox discussion that we had about a year ago, where we decided that this year would just be an opportunity to take a look at the capacity and the feasibility and the benefit or lack thereof of moving forward with that particular piece. So, that's just a review. And with that, when in the third bullet, centered on the reminder to the board that a component that we agreed on would be that this year, we would continue to take a look at the feeder patterns in terms of from elementary to middle, and how to be more efficient with that where necessary, not changing just for the sake of change, but where we could smooth those feeder patterns in a way that it would be beneficial to the organization, that we bring the steering committee and other subcommittees back together to continue that work. So, it's time to, of course, again, execute that and keep the board abreast of where we are. And of course, take a look back to see which members of the board, members or member of the board was a part of that and reignite that whole process as well. Opportunities and options. We just had, we just received, of course, the update on Lafayette Winona. We just talked about Magic Johnson Bridge Gate and where we are, so we will continue that. We have a task force and a committee that has been in effect in reference to the Comprehensive Technical Academy, and those meetings will continue. On our end, from a programmatic standpoint, we've been working on the prospectus, the work that was already done. Much work already done, but it will continue in terms of partnering with the city and of its role with moving this forward. And of course, much of that centers on identifying funding and what the implications might be. So, that continues for this year, and we do have representation from this board on that steering committee as well. So, next, choice options. Everybody's familiar with the notion or the fact that PPA process is continuing. You will receive a, an update later on to this afternoon during this agenda in reference to where we are with PPA and those facilities and projects that are before us. So, I would move on to the next piece. Okay. Professional learning is a major part of the work across each step, as well as if there are themes that are attached to a particular change mechanism, then professional learning, it should be an example around which staff members have been immersed or have begun to be. And that continues not only with themes, but with what we call the core of the work as it relates to teaching and learning in terms of teacher behavior that results in high-year results for students, as well as leadership behavior that would result in high-year results for students. And so, many examples between, since the end of the school year and the beginning of this year around activity related to professional development. And what you have before you will give you some examples along the line of the themes in reference to work that has already been done outside of even the core of the work that relates to teaching and learning. More bullets that give you, that will give you an idea of how we are progressing with the professional learning piece. So, I will move on. And the last, the last couple of slides should give you an idea of the most recent professional learning endeavors with Harry Wong, who is a well-known name in, in the whole notion and market of teaching and learning. Had an opportunity to provide various modules to our teaching staff around the importance of the work and how does it link to moving student achievement forward, as well as Dr. Jensen's work as it relates to having a finger on the pulse of closing the achievement gap and what the implications are for closing achievement gaps between students that may come to us from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds compared to those that do not. And simply put, it means that those standards must remain very constant and high. The difference and variance centers on the fact that the way that you go about implementing has to be different because you must customize to close those gaps and accelerate the rate at which we begin to increase the percentage meeting and exceeding standards. And so, what you see before you consists of examples of the work that is being done to move that forward. The intent of the educational planning piece this evening, this afternoon, was to just bring us back to the point of reality around the fact that there are other items that are moving forward this year in terms of readiness. Most of it centers on planning, in addition to the repurposing of Lafayette Winona. And much of it also centers on professional learning implications. And I'll close by reminding you of the two pieces that are of utmost importance to us this current year and going forward. And that would be teacher effectiveness, not just highly qualified, but teacher effectiveness, which means high-yield results. And high-yield results come to us based on the way we roll out instruction to our students and the kind of behaviors that we want to see in the classroom when we make those visits. For example, the teacher as the facilitator, students working collaboratively in groups around the aligned information that the child should know and be able to do. So, teacher effectiveness as well as leader effectiveness, meaning how do you model that? How do you build a team to ensure that those kinds of behaviors? And there are three major behaviors that result in the highest yield result for students. And we want to see those behaviors in our classrooms at a much higher rate and frequency as compared to those others. For example, continuous lecture, that kind of thing, students learn through lecture, but they don't retain the knowledge in terms of a high yield, at a high yield level as it compares to those other measures. So, those things are important for us to ensure that we provide the support for our building-level leaders, our central leaders, as well as the support for our classroom teachers that would result in those behaviors. So, with that, I'll close. Take any questions?
All right. By most accounts, it seems that summer definitely provided an opportunity for wonderful professional development, especially in those two areas that you just mentioned with Wong and with Jensen. I heard a lot of positive feedback about both of those opportunities. Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay. All right.
On the, can you just re-describe again what you were referring to with the enrollment piece? The, there was something in here about the fifth-grade cohorts and sixth-grade cohorts, and so there was that-
Feeder patterns?
Yeah, the feeder patterns. Can you talk a little bit about that again?
During the study, the Young Richter study, one component of it consisted of, one of the options consisted of taking a look at our elementary schools and which middle schools they would feed into. And then, which, from the middle school component, which high schools they would feed into. And it showed some disparity along that line. And after that discussion with the steering committee, the option resulted in utilizing this year to continue to review those patterns, to see if there was some opportunity to achieve smoothing the patterns so that we could have more of a longitudinal study with students moving from elementary to middle. And then, how they move into high school, of course, changes because as we increase choice, then, you know, there's no exact science to that. But also taking a look at, in addition to smoothing the feeder pattern, opportunities for socioeconomic implications around looking at those feeder patterns. And so, from that option, the decision was to continue to look at that and look at those statistics and the results that came from that to determine what kind of recommendations we could make to the board this current year or going into next year for that purpose.
Yeah, because I know when we were having the, I guess, the May master planning schedule, one of the meetings, and I was using the example of the puzzle. So, I'm still trying to figure out how the, how the pieces fit because we have, you know, we talked about the former Winona School that will be district-wide. And then, we'll hear later about the Camp Estella School that will, at least right now, is being proposed to have so many choice seats. And then, there's conversation around lotteries and some other things. So, as I was going through this again, I still think that somehow we have to be able to streamline, or maybe prioritize some things and go back and look at it again in terms of, because we started to have a conversation around what our goals would be, and we didn't finish that conversation because it's a whole lot of stuff. So, we just did, we just started the configuration of Todd Water and Young. We hadn't had a chance to kind of work through that, see how it's going and what lessons we can learn from that. We're now talking about planning for Lindenwood and Jay Cox, is what was originally the goal. Then, we have Winona, then we have a whole bunch of essential actions that we're talking about. It just seems to me, there's so much stuff on the plate that maybe if there's a few things that we can kind of prioritize and focus on and say, these will really help the work that you're doing to move the district forward for the next year, and maybe some other things, we may have to plan them out further. We talked about strategic plan. Just seems like it's a lot of stuff. And as we talked later about the climate, I think part of the challenge with the climate is just so much stuff, people don't know where to give focus and attention. I feel that way as a board member. So, I just throw that out there for the board to consider and for Dr. King, for you to consider. You know, if there's some way to, you know, focus on a few things. I know we want to be ambitious and all that, but it's a lot of stuff we have out there right now, and I'm just not sure how all the pieces fit together. Much time is I spend, if I'm not sure, I don't know how somebody in the public would just, you know, feel about it.
So, this gives us that opportunity because really, the intent, if we use Lindenwood and Jay Cox as an example, the intent was to have further review and discussion around that, which means that, you know, the decision could be that it's not timely or beneficial going in the next school year to move forward with reconfiguration, for example. I'm not saying that that's going to be the outcome. But also, as we take a look at where we are with the other items that were mentioned, the purpose of the update is to remind the board that it is that time that we should continue with the committee, taking a look at those things to see where we are, whether, you know, we modify timelines, adjust timelines, or because, or as we link with the strategic plan, go in a different direction, but not steering away from the plan, but a different strategy. So, it's time to do that review. So, because of the status of it now, it does not mean that it cannot change if it is timely for it to change. Just as when you implement that first year of your strategic plan, there should be examples of some things that we were very successful at, and then, there are others that should carry over into the next year. And there are examples of some that you determined that this strategy was not effective in accomplishing the intent of the action plan. Therefore, we modify that strategy. So, the same concept comes into play here. It's just the update, the intended update is to remind us that it is time to revisit those things and make the right decisions around those.
This isn't for action. This is just on my mind, and will be there until we finish our budget conversation for next year. But in the DeJohn Richter report, there was some mention that other than Lafayette Winona, previous Lafayette Winona School, the number of middle schools might be reconsidered at some point in time. And I just wanted you to know that remains on my mind for next year's budget conversation, and it has some pertinence here, depending on how our milestones conversations go over the next two months.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Okay, moving on to item three point oh two, teaching and learning, school leadership development. Sam?
Great. Teaching and learning and school leadership development will consist of an update related to the school improvement and turnaround department purpose and its work up until this point, as well as implications for focus and priority schools, essential actions, all of the above for part one. Part two of that, of course, would be the district climate survey results and action plan and what that means for the strategic plan. With that said, I would refer to Dr. Wilford and Dr. Bailey.
I just interrupted my conversation. We received a presentation that's updated from the one that was previous. Is that right?
Yes.
Sure. So, just wanted to be sure everybody's using the same presentation. It was the one that Janelle just handed out.
And basically, that's a condensed version.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure people knew what they were, you were speaking from.
Yes. Okay. Dr. King, member, Dr. Houston, and members of the board, we would like to give an update this afternoon on focus, priority, schools, and also an update on the essential actions from our academic review last spring. We will look at data, define, review, or define those priority and focus schools, as well as look at how do we provide support now, and of course, segue right into the academic review. What you have is a slide there that just outlines priority and focus. Priority schools being the lowest thirty-seven, lowest performing, thirty-seven lowest-performing schools in the state of Virginia. Focus schools in, being the lowest ten percent in the state of Virginia. And then, we're looking at, according to gap groups, and then, the Title One and non-Title One schools that could be credited with warning as well. Okay. And so, when you define priority, again, with the lowest five percent, you're looking at information in the annual measurable objectives in terms of the total or the all-student group. And when you look at focus, you're looking at, as a calculation, that the state calculates those students' performance according to gap groups. And so, with this, this slide, you can see who those, who the gap groups are. And I know we have a lot of different conversation about gap groups, but that's gap group one includes your students with disabilities, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged. Then, gap group two are African-American students. Gap group three, Hispanic, Hispanic students. And so, thought that was important to understand that when we talk about federal accountability as opposed to becoming fully accredited and how that process is, how that process goes in towards of, how that process goes in naming priority and focus schools. Priorities, so schools have to meet both federal and state accountability requirements. This slide shows you where we are this year as far as the assessment year. Looking at year three there, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, assessment year. Those are assessments that occurred last spring will be held accountable this year for those schools. for those schools. At this point, we have not received official, official notification for priority or focus schools. That's coming up on September 16th. But we know who our schools were in 13-14 and in the previous years.
We talk about accreditation and then we talk about focus and priority schools. And you made a very good distinction between federal standards and state standards. When it comes to the annual measurable objectives, how is that tested? It's not the same as an SOL, correct? Or is it the same?
Yes, actually, yeah. The way that we refer to it, we have two accountability systems. We have our standards of accreditation and then we have our federal annual measurable objectives. And what we have is that we use SOL results for both accountability systems. They do have formulas that they use to calculate the, our schools' results to determine whether they have met the associated benchmarks or not. And so there's two separate benchmarks as well. And so as we move forward into the school year, we will share with you more information related to that. So in what Dr. Wilford is showing you, if you recall for accreditation, our benchmark for English was seventy-five percent proficient, whereas for this particular measure here, it's sixty-nine percent. And you'll see that here on this particular chart where we have provided you the SOL information. So it's two different systems. They both use SOL results. For accreditation, we have English reading and writing. We have math, history, and science. For, I call it FAMO, or federal annual measurable objective, we just have reading, English reading, and math.
Thank you.
Dr. Bailey, would you go back to your example of this particular slide? When you use an example of a particular figure and the year and what that meant? Could you repeat that?
Okay. So just to reiterate, our accreditation measures or the benchmark is seventy-five percent proficient for, and that's a combination of English reading and writing for, and so for our AMO, if you see here, we have mathematics. So the associated accreditation is seventy percent and the benchmark here for all students is sixty-six percent. And that's under the column that has the star for year three. And so it also has outlined benchmarks for each of the subgroups and the proficiency gap groups. And that is the difference also between the AMO results and the accreditation. Accreditation does not look at the subgroups, but AMO does.
So, Lauren, I want you to be certain that board understands that difference and that this represents the goal, the measure, the benchmark that we have to, of course, internalize and strive to secure in terms of both areas. So ultimately, everything's linked in terms of when you hear me say, we must increase the percentage of students meeting exceeding standards.
Yes.
That's, that's across, that impacts and is beneficial to us from a state accountability standpoint, as well as from a federal accountability standpoint. But when you look at the benchmarks and the requirements or the goals, they're different. And so this helps everybody understand what are those differences and that's what this is about.
Right. And, and just to sum it up, for accreditation, we have four benchmarks that we have to achieve. For AMO, we have thirty-six benchmarks that you have to achieve. Missing one or more means that you did not meet all of the FMA MO benchmarks.
And then their consequences would be missed.
And the benchmarks that the web writers have, because you have so many different gap groups, that you need to have a certain amount of accountability for, or meeting the standard, what their standard is that they're setting.
That's correct. And also, we have a percent of our students that have to participate in SOL testing and that benchmark is ninety-five percent.
And it's not safe to say that if you've passed all of your SOLs, that you're automatically passing all of your AMOs because you still have your gap groups that you have to make sure are hitting that same target.
That's correct. Yes.
Those gap groups come into play as you disaggregate your data as well. And so that's why we hear us talk about those individual subgroups.
And eventually, some funding.
Yes.
And so as we move forward and we look at the data from the various tests as it pertains to our priority schools, you will see where we are continuing to make progress and we're trending towards the, the targets. Not there yet, but we are trending towards the targets. And so the work that we do across the board will show, we, we look to get closer to those targets where we've shown the, the state benchmark as well as the AMO. Some schools have, have met targets and we are, we have great anticipation in terms of those schools perhaps moving out of priority or focus. And in other areas, we still have work to do. And so you have those data points just so that you can see from the last couple of years as we continue to do the work. One of the things that we want to do, or that we've established to help focus the work even more this year so that we can increase growth rapidly, is to look at how do we provide support to our schools? And so we wanted to build our capacity, leadership capacity, through the establishment of an Office of School Turnaround and Improvement. Again, that's to help, you've seen this Virginia model, and one of the goals of the Office of School Turnaround Improvement is to ensure that we implement the Virginia model for schools, low-performing schools, by emphasizing the seven turnaround principles that have been adopted and supported by the USED as well as the VDOE. And we will continue to do that work by inspecting what we expect, following, of course, using our strategic plan as well as data-driven decision-making. To help us be accountable in our work, the OSTE, the OSTE Office has adopted seven goals as well, so that we are held accountable just as we are holding our schools accountable for meeting targets. We have our own targets in terms of the support that we provide schools. And so at this point, I would like to transition now into, segue into, the academic review, unless there are other questions about priority and focus schools.
Can you just clarify on the, on the slide where you were showing the bar graph, the SOL pass rates?
For...
Don't read that one. So the Lake Taylor is Lake Taylor Middle.
Yes.
And what's the first one that says elementary?
Excuse me? That's the aggregate for elementary schools. We did not include an aggregate for the middle schools on that slide, but we included the middle schools that were priority.
Okay, so Richard, Richard Bowlin and Sherwood are focus, correct?
Focus schools, yes, sir.
The rest are priority. And then you were mentioning earlier about next week, you're anticipating to hear from the state whether or not we may, some may come off or some may come on.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any sense right now whether or not we may have fewer or more?
I can't say whether it would be fewer or more, but we do, based on the data that we see, we, we are, we are bound to have, we anticipate that we'll have some schools to exit. And looking at it, we may have, we potentially have schools that will enter as well. Keep it in mind that, again, the state services thirty-seven schools in terms of priority. So there, there has to be a long list of schools that could enter into priority. And so based on the data that, that we've seen, we haven't seen the state's data, of course, from other schools, but just based on our own measures, we, we anticipate that we may have additional schools to enter.
At the priority level?
Priority and/or focus. Now, in terms of the academic review, essential actions, have a slide here and, oops. With the academic review, just wanted to give an update on, on the status of implementation. We had fifteen essential actions and we've done quite a bit of work since last spring to address those essential actions. You should also have this packet in terms of a working copy of what we use to update ourselves as we've addressed the essential actions from the academic review. And so what you see there is that we have fifteen either completed or implemented, and that's set at a functional level, since May, in our eyes, that's a functional level. We have a report that's due to the VDOE by September 30th and then, in, in which we will discuss those essential actions and, and the level of implementation that, that's there. We need to understand that some essential actions will occur until they become embedded practices or they're, they're ongoing practices that, that should occur throughout the division. And so you see that in terms of professional learning, lesson planning, meetings with lead turnaround partners, things like that happen each, every year. And so every year in its ongoing, and so I just wanted to make that clear as well. We have another training that, that we've received with support from the VDOE in terms of aligning the academic review to performance evaluation. That's a year-long training that, that's going on for our division-level instructional leaders as well as priority school principals. So that's some support coming from the VDOE Office of School Improvement. And so I just wanted to take a little bit of time, if you have any questions about specific, if you have any questions about specific essential actions, we have our team ready to address those questions.
Just for clarity, these are the central officer district essential actions, right?
Yes.
And then you, then you all gave us essential actions for each individual school.
Yes.
So how's, how's that coming at the school level?
At the school level, the executive directors are responsible for ensuring that those schools are implementing their essential actions. And so as we are going to meet with schools during our site visits, that's been a point of, of discussion at this point. Some of the essential actions for the divisions, or many of them, reflect directly back to what needs to happen at the school level. And so I gave you an example, the training that's occurring, we call it the ARP training, Aligning the Academic Review to the Performance Evaluation. Priority school principals, along with division-level leaders, received that training in, at the beginning of August. As a division, we're going to train the entire division on, on what we were trained with. And so that will go on throughout the year. When you look at other essential actions, like the lesson plan, planning, and professional development with unpacking, we use professional development days, August 19th and 20th for, again, the entire division. And so as executive directors conduct their site visits, they will create the follow-up report that's due to the state on September 30th. Principals will have to update their indoor star plans also to reflect the actions that have gone on within their individual buildings.
So with that, what we, what we would like to do, of course, during the work session in a timely manner, as we are reporting progress on, around essential actions for the division itself, have a mechanism where we keep the board updated on progress across individual schools. Of course, that wouldn't be something, we wouldn't take time in the work session to speak about each individual school, however, provide that to you in terms of where, where we are with those individual schools and give you a general report in a work session from a commentary standpoint about what we see. Are we, do we see that we're gaining ground, moving forward? What are the challenges, that kind of thing? However, provide the reports to you from the snapshot standpoint from the state across each individual school so that you will know where we're moving. And that should happen probably around every quarter, we would think, right?
We can provide that on...
So around maybe October, November, October probably would be a time within that range. So just as we're doing this. And this is exactly the kind of information we talked about, I guess, seven, eight months ago, when we talked about priority school, focus school reports. So thank you. Well?
I'm not sure if any other board members would be interested in hearing this. I know that there's funding that's going to be tied with the focus and priority schools and we had talked about the, the grant funding that's associated with that and schools coming up with a budget for some of the SIG monies. I think it might be helpful for, for me, especially as we go into the budget process, to look at a school in particular, for example, Camp Estella, and look at what they've done with their budget over the past two years, what they're looking at to do with their budget this year, and how that plays a role into implementing the essential action plans. And I guess how that, you can also bring in how they're incorporating tasks from the strategic plan. And the reason why I say Camp Estella is because it obviously needs a lot of attention with the scores that it has, but it's also going to be one of our brand-new schools for construction. So I think that for me, it would be really helpful into seeing how they're preparing their budget with the external funds that are coming in and then if the board needs to, while we're developing our budget, use any of our resources to assist them. And I'm not sure if there are any other board members that would appreciate a presentation or a discussion about that in perhaps our next work session.
Well, you know, we had, when we went to, I guess it was last January, we got snowed out and we were working on the role of the board in school improvement. And I'm not sure whatever really came of that, but I think that was kind of the stuff. I don't know if it was down to the budget level, but at least some of the, the task and other pieces was where they were trying to take us. So, you know, we might be able to go back and grab, grab some of that and use that as a, as a framework.
All right. Thank you all very much. Okay, 3.03, School Board Policy Committee, Mr. Jordan. Reverend Haywood, did I miss something?
No.
Oh, sorry. Moving pretty fast here. Yes, climate support, I'm sorry, I mean, survey.
So next, we will provide an update as it relates to the district climate survey results and action plan. The intent here is to speak to the survey and the analysis and the process that is being used now to turn that analysis into action.
Now, I would certainly reiterate that we received, you know, really good detailed information and...
It will be a test.
So, yes, so high level overview would be good.
Yeah, we do have the test.
I'm going to stand up.
You said it was just going to be a five-minute, ten-minute discussion. The action plan, I'm sure, is really honestly what we're interested in, knowing that we've all read a lot of the content.
Absolutely.
You know, I was about to composite, I'm sure. Okay, who's over, Will?
Go ahead.
Okay, ready? Certainly, good evening, afternoon. Mr. Buddy from the ARA office will start off and share a few points with you related to our climate survey and... And in general, this is a perception, a snapshot, point in time, getting feedback from our stakeholders.
Okay, you received a CD that has the school reports for all the schools, for parents, students, and teachers. As we've done in the past, I caution you, and there's also two documents on the CD that were sent to principals suggesting how to interpret their data. I caution you about interpretation of the parent surveys. We had very low response rates from a number of schools for the number of parents. So, take that with a grain of caution, so there's probably some bias in there. We got the full report. All principals received their student and teacher survey reports in June prior to the release of the school year so that they could share that information with their staff. The parent survey was closed in early July, and the principals received their data in late July. Methodology was pretty much the same. The themes, if you would go ahead on, you see the themes are really focusing around relationships and academic rigor. Relationships, as we heard from Dr. Jensen earlier, this couple, I guess a week ago, are very important and make up a major, these themes make up a major component of school climate. At the district level, keep going, let me just step through it quick. It's been relatively unchanged. We've used the same instruments for the last six years. They are research-based. Elementary consistently are more positive responses than secondary. As I said, some schools still struggle. And the measures of climate are highly associated with SOL results. The detail is in the report. Couple of points here that teacher morale is talked about in page six of the document. And there was an HR study that was presented to the board earlier this year talking about climate, and that's discussed briefly on page eight of the document. So I'm gonna turn it over now to my executive director's colleagues to talk about how the data's being used.
Okay, and we're gonna split it into elementary and secondary. I just want you to know that the principals take this data very seriously, pour over it all summer. And it is used in numerous ways. On the slides, I've put some activities that principals use, action steps that you have requested that principals are doing in their schools to use the data. However, they are used by us as well. We pour over that data all summer long as well. And the data is used in standard two of the principal evaluation system. It is also being used right now in formulating principal goals, principal SMART goals, for their evaluation at the end of the year. If you look on the slide, oops, no, keep going. Stay there, right there. As you know, PLCs have become embedded in our schools, and one of the things principals are doing is using the survey results as topics for PLCs. One of them is just up here, successes and obstacles to student achievement, but there are numerous ways this survey can be used for PLCs. And then, of course, there's a whole list of group activities that principals have used with their staffs already this year during pre-service week, and you can move on, that show things that they have done, integrating them with the cycle of results, implementing school improvement plans. And one of the areas we've wanted to connect is PBIS. As PBIS grows and becomes a part of the division, fully implemented, which will take about three to five years. This was our first year of implementation. So by the end of the full implementation, these two things should be interwoven so that PBIS should drive a lot of the survey results by making the climate in each school a better climate. And with PBIS, another thing we need to look at when we look at a correlation between how well PBIS predicts climate or correlates with the climate survey, there are a lot of other factors besides PBIS that affect a climate results. We can always tell in a climate survey when there's a first-year administrator in the building because there's change. And all change results in a little bit of upset. But on a whole, these are being used right now. This is when principals use them at most. And I'm gonna turn over to John to talk about the secondary use.
All right, at the secondary level, basically, you saw when the outline was of when the principals and the schools got their CD with their climate survey data. So the expectation for them then was to take it and look at it with their school leadership team or their school improvement team, and all of that took place during the summer. They reviewed that data, they identified the strengths to celebrate, they identified the areas of concern that needed to be addressed. During that summer as well, they discussed action steps and strategies for each area of concern was then developed so that they can then take it into the fall and actually start implementing things during the school year. A timeline was developed, and there's steps across the board during the school year of when there's going to be checks and monitoring to take place. So the results are then gonna be shared, or in some cases, some of the schools have already done it. In other cases, it'll be done over the next several weeks at their faculty meeting where they'll actually lay out those action steps, who the responsible person is, and what the timeline for implementation is. And it actually has to go to the faculty as well because there has to be buy-in. And so there'll be an opportunity for that dialogue on the part of the faculty that if adjustments to strategies need to take place, that opportunity is there. During the course of the school year, there'll be quarterly reporting of the progress on those action steps. That'll be done with the staff as well as with me as the executive director, as I meet with principals during their evaluation process as well. As Dr. Malisi said, you know, we have standard two with our evaluation system that the climate really comes into play. We really expect to have that as a focus this year.
So, in summary, we've heard a little bit about our growths and strengths and learning about how climate information is being used in the professional learning community, and then as well as how the climate results are being used in schools. And so this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. So, do you seek to identify some best practices among principals as they implement this process that perhaps could be used at other schools that have more challenges in the area of climate?
Yes, during our cluster meetings, you know, we'll look at those principals that had strengths in certain areas and have them share out with their colleagues what they did to hopefully identify what that strength was. Now, each staff is a little bit differently and will react differently, but in terms of, you know, what worked and what didn't work, those things will be shared.
Is there training or professional development in this particular area for principals to really hone in on the challenges related to climate?
That is an expectation at some point during the year. We don't have the timeline for that quite yet, but that is, you know, something that is in the works.
I'd like to add to that, we're, I mentioned two things around teacher effectiveness and leadership effectiveness. One component of the leadership effectiveness is that we're seeking to adopt a research-based, customized process for leadership training for all principals. And this piece is a component of that. We've not reached completion of that yet, but the intent hopefully is to begin to, as we are providing some training for principals now, but the intent is to have the whole package customized process and be ready to begin implementation no later than November, hopefully is what we'd like to do. So, that piece, once adopted and implementation has begun, will include this as well.
Thank you. Brad? My question, when I read through the survey results that I received, amongst the themes that came across was that of perception for within schools.
Okay.
Concern of teachers, concern of students, and the concern of principals. Can you tell by the survey data, is the perception improving, or is it worsening or staying the same?
I'll say a little bit to that is that over the last couple of years, since we've been doing the survey for the last six years, I think the amount of attention and the visibility of the concept of bullying has certainly changed in the six years since the survey started. So from that standpoint, yeah, you're going to see more of it because people are more aware of it. Now, I'll let my colleagues talk about what's happening in the schools, but the numbers, I don't recall the numbers, but they're in the report, but that doesn't measure everything that's going on in schools, as you can appreciate.
And I just wanted to say that that's where we're projecting we will see a big bang for our book in PBIS because that, PBIS should affect that considerably, both in actuality and in the perception. Because bullying is defined, bullying is encouraged to be reported, and so that should affect the results of that.
All right, that leads up to my second question, is what are the specific action steps or action plans designed to affect that? PBS is the primary way of affecting that? Are there any other strategies involved to affect the incidences of bullying and the acts and the perception?
Yes, sir. There is training that we have annually with staff, and we have some additional training that we planned on doing this school year. We've also just recently, on Friday, distributed, started distributing posters that deal with that particular topic to every school. We've updated information in our student conduct handbook as well. We're also working with some other organizations that are partnering with us related to technical assistance, and that covers that component. And all of those services will be provided to schools. And so, enhanced awareness piece, training, the materials, and we're constantly looking at other options and things that we can do to support the schools related to that, including our reporting mechanisms.
Mark?
Thank you.
This is a three-year theme.
Heard it before.
But I'm gonna refer to the executive summary, bullet five under the first page. Teachers reported, safe, continues. On the next page, bullet four, under the least positive responses, safety and other students as well as disciplines continues. And finally, on the third page of the executive summary, third bullet under the general observations, again, safety remaining. I'm pleased that for each year the superintendent's been here, at the end of the school year, a letter has gone home asking parents and students, if they see something, to say something. I've appreciated that. I think it's a wise thing. I'm not sure if we've done anything with back-to-school materials or not this year, but Norfolk State at the beginning of its school year said those very terms, see something, say something. Old Dominion's done the same thing. We have as our mission to help our students to be societal contributors. I can think of no greater contribution that our students can make, that if they see something and say something, and that we emphasize that mechanism because we have thirty thousand-plus people that can help us. It's not only what we ask our teachers to do and what our directors do, we can ask all of our students to be part of this solution. This climate survey further emphasizes the need, in my opinion, for a three-year theme of see something, say something. We have a mechanism. I don't know if it made it in the back-to-school material. I mean, Dr. Lance?
Yes, sir. The information was included in the materials and also the hotline, our Safe Schools hotline, that information was included in the materials as well, and the number and specific details on all of the posters that are being distributed to the schools this week.
It meets our mission to ask our students to be societal contributors, and I can think of no greater way to address this climate survey than to ask all of our students to be part of the solution. If they see something that's wrong in the neighborhood or whatever, to say something so that all of us can be part of the solution, and I thank you for doing that. Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Mark. And Noel?
So, in your general survey summaries of what we've got here, it says that teachers respond positively about helping students, recognizing achievements, setting high standards, academic standards, principal expectations, and their principal maintaining performance standards. Then it says that teachers were the least positive about salary structures and benefits, amount of general parental support and student behavior. So my question is a very basic one. Are we saying in these reports that the teachers' response positively is increasing from last year? Or is it decreasing? Their response about, the least positive responses about salary structures, what is the movement there? I mean, how should we be looking at this in terms of being able to understand?
It's been a while since I've read this, but it should be in the back.
No, that's what I was reading this summer.
Yeah, there's usually a comparison.
Yeah, in the discussion area.
Is it the PowerPoint page or the actual report page?
Yeah, the composite measures that looked at a comparison last year. On your individual school reports, you'll see, as I've done before, several years for each of the composite measures, and also a comparison of the level and also the district for each of the composite measures. So then you can have more of a trend. But if you have some specific questions, I have six years' worth of data, so I can give you the kinds of trends, but I didn't include six-year trends in the analysis.
Yeah, I wasn't sure which tables to look at, the cuts that we're going through this and trying to figure that.
That's looking at the current year, that's part of that summary, so the current year. And it's been pretty consistent from year to year, salaries an issue, student behavior is an issue, working with colleague, collegial environments, communications, issues with lack of parental support. You see that in the HR exit survey results, you know, some comments from the teachers. So it's a consistent, those are pretty much consistent themes for the surveys that I've been-
And I wanted to just-
Go back through and try to capture that in these tables, because I couldn't, you know.
I just wanted to add that, yes, what we have seen is that teachers are feeling more positively about working with students as we have encountered school improvement strategies as well as safety nets to address any challenges or to accelerate student learning. And certainly every year that we've done our annual survey, there have been comments or, you know, something related to the salary structure. Certainly everyone wants to get a raise every year, and not every year can we do that. And so that always comes up as something that may be least positive in the survey results.
Okay, I'm sorry, Noel, then, thank you.
Rodney, do you have questions, too?
Yeah, I'll wait.
I'll last.
Noel?
For the parental survey, you mentioned that there was a low amount of parental response. What are you all going to do this year to increase that response? Go through Norfolk Gains or, I'm not sure.
Well, that would be nice, maybe to incorporate some thoughts from the Norfolk Gains group as well as maybe looking at capturing parental input at different activities that take place at each of the school buildings versus trying to capture responses at the end of the school year.
And it's randomly sent out to the parents, or it's a paper document that's handed to the, it's on the line?
Let me go back. We've always had issues with parental responses. Until about four years ago, we used to actually mail about two, over two-thirds of the parents in the district, the survey on scan sheets, and had a postage-paid envelope where they filled it out, all they'd do is stick it in the mail. And at that point, we were only getting back about ten, eleven, twelve percent of the twenty thousand surveys that we mailed out. About eight percent of them had incorrect addresses, so we were getting back eleven to twelve percent. We also saw the parental response rate when we were still doing the triennial census, and that had budgetary impact. So we were getting fairly low response rates on survey information, asking parents and guardians throughout the city to complete information so that we could then turn that into the state to help the district get additional funding. So those results were pretty poor for the two years that I was involved with the triennial census. So to answer your question, I think what Karen said is that we need to really look at it from the standpoint of going into the schools and capturing them when they come into the school.
Aren't several of our schools now offering dinner to families? So maybe we can do- So, maybe we can do that, and the parental survey is exclusively online or do we have paper form?
It's been online the last two times.
It's just the kids. It's just.
We can make it paper if that's.
We can make it paper. So, maybe, I'm just trying to think. We need to bring the parents into this survey because they're, they're going to voice their concerns at PTA meetings, at, at our forums, but, but if they can voice their concerns also anonymously via this method, I think that we can get input and use their input to make change, and sometimes that helps with buy-in and support of a program to help take ownership. So, whatever method that we can use to bring parents into the survey and to get their, their comments on it, I think is going to be healthy for the division. So, whether it's the PTA, or the evening dinners, or the Norfolk Gains, I think that would be good.
I would also, getting it out to the public using MPS TD, using reverse phone calling, using the website. I mean, there's multiple avenues to promote utilizing the survey. It really doesn't cost the district anything. I can see where mailing out
Right.
the, the surveys, paper surveys back and trying to get them back is pretty futile. If we could multiply, promote the survey every chance we get to do it online in the libraries.
Any of our awards assemblies, any of our awards assemblies have the paper copy or have the link ready to hand out to them when it comes to the awards ceremony?
Right. I would like to call on Ms. Mather to address some of the strategies we used this year.
Hi, thank you. Yes, Dr. Robinson, you're absolutely right. Reverse phone calls, website are absolutely important and have been used in this particular application. Also, we discussed offering it multiple times with the paper pencil copy as an addition. So, all of those many, many strategies to get it out to the parents are necessary to bump up that participation. You know, surveys for busy parents are a challenge, so we just have to keep trying and keep pushing it out there as, as much as possible.
That brings up an excellent question. Because I'm opposing.
Yeah, thank you.
Exactly. But would it be better to have a shorter survey for parents to include, to, to increase participation? Because I know when I look at a survey and it's a big, long document, I am put off by it, and I don't have the time to do that. So, is there a way that we can formulate a survey that would be reliable and valid and give us the information we need, but make it user-friendly for the, for the public?
That's something that we will explore this year and possibly talk with the Norfolk Gains group. I think they might be able to provide some insight on how we could do that.
And you've got all the other groups too.
Yes.
You have Rudeman, Camp Stella, you have all the PTAs. I think we've got a great captured audience. Rodney?
I want to figure out, now, if Dr. King, some way that as a team we can maybe have a more politically incorrect conversation about some of the data. So, I'm just, I just pulled up two schools. And one school, which is a school that we've identified as hard to staff, priority school. You look at some of the results and, I'll pick one. The principal puts suggestions made by the faculty into operation, and great deal is 13%. I go to another school, fully accredited and economically diverse, and the result is a huge gap. Another example, threats of violence towards teachers. So, one school will have great deal 13%, not at all 7%. The other school, threats of violence towards teacher, not at all 62%, great deal 0%. And so, when we keep talking about teacher turnover and, you know, what the research shows us about the climate that's needed at these schools, I appreciate the high-level overview and some of the things that we've talked about, but I'd like to know, how can we get down to the point where we can really talk about what we're seeing and the challenges and the struggles that we may be having at some schools, successes we may be having in other schools, and how we continue to bring it up and going back with Dr. Gabriel was saying earlier, whether it's central administration supports, policies that the board has, funding support. But it's scary to me to have such wide disparity between schools when we have, you know, one of our objectives being, you know, equity and justice and so forth. So, I don't know if you or somebody can just speak to that, executive directors, of how you really look at those types of results and really engage to make sure that our teachers are feeling safe and supported, principals are feeling likewise. And, I mean, it's just some stuff in here that I just think is pretty startling when you get down and start looking at. I just picked two. It's just pretty startling, and I'd just like to hear you talk about it.
So, to that point, as you take a look at the individual school reports, you certainly find all ends of the spectrum. And certainly, you will also find that there is, in my view, correlation between where schools have been successful and the results and the outcome of those results in terms of how the staff feels in reference to the administration, for example. So, there are clear examples of that when you, and that's another example of disaggregating those results because you, you can see overall where the division is in terms of climate. That's one indicator. Since we're using that one, you can see where the system is. But then when you, when you take a look at your approach with looking at two or three individual schools, you see variance across schools that have been very successful with student achievement and how that links to climate, for example. The opposite is that you see variance in schools that have not been successful and then issues, negative issues with climate. So, for us, this current year, that has implications for the fact that each executive, executive director has responsibility across schools, and it's clear what those results are across each individual school. My expectation as superintendent is that each executive director has that process and that the action steps that principals are going to implement must link with what those results tell us. And so, that will be addressed across each school based on what the results tell us. The other piece, because then that ties it to our expectations and what we value because that's a part of the evaluation process, so it has to be linked. And then, that's an accountability mechanism. For me, as a superintendent, in terms of expecting executive directors to be accountable to ensure that what you see in the results, that we have action steps that are being implemented to address those. That's one thing. The other goes back to what I mentioned earlier. There is a need across the division to continuously improve as it relates to effective leadership. Therefore, consistent, standard, best practices around, not just the student achievement piece. That's a fair amount of importance. But in order to get to student achievement, you've got to have some of these other affective items that occur. Clearly, you see it in the results. So, in order to get that, each principal has to become highly proficient at each of those modules, and they will not without the appropriate professional development. Even when you're at different ends of the spectrum, those that have done well in certain areas, of course, can be models for others. But as we adopt the training mechanism that allows us to provide that to each of those principals, then we ought to see those results begin to change. But, yes, we can have further conversation around that, and we ought to in our quarterly reports, just as we talked about essential actions and how we are addressing those essential actions. Part of the quarterly report can be condensed to the point that we talk about what are we doing in individual schools because you can look at specific schools to see that, that there's a huge difference in what you see in school X compared to school Y. And so, again, back to the, the training that's necessary for all principals across that and effective leadership, as well as accountability with improving it by certain action steps in those individual schools.
Yeah, because I'll just pick two more and then I'll be done. So, one school, physical conflicts among students, and in parentheses it says fighting. So, between quite a bit and a great deal, 84% of the teachers say that that's a problem at that school. And then the other school, 0%. And so, if there's a school where teachers are feeling that 84%, 84% of the teachers feel that there's conflicts among students, then to me, you know, whatever support we can give to address that environment so that children can learn is something we should do all we can to support. And the other one is academic achievement is recognized and acknowledged by the school. So, very frequently, at one school, it's 52%, so about half the teachers say that's done. And at the other school, it's 92%. And so, those types of gaps and disparities, I just feel, you know, we talk about budgets and talk about supports and safety nets. It's got to be something that we can do to support that because it's tying right back to what we're seeing with the teacher turnover morale and academic achievement.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. One of the training, professional development pieces alluded to not just achievement gap, but attitude gap. And I think that has a lot to do with climate as well. Warren?
A hallmark of continuous improvement is using data to make decisions. I have a historical note. This may, I apologize, this may end up being a compliment to Mr. Fuddy and his predecessors. But 1989, the state official was asked by Denise Snitzer, who preceded Dr. Sevigny, remember her? To please give money to help Norfolk Public Schools establish data to make decisions, to have these kinds of surveys. I know about that because I was the state official, and we did give Norfolk Public Schools money at that time. Later, Mr. Jordan and I, what was the year when the Broad folks came down?
2005.
2005, in the final interview, the mayor, the assistant mayor, the head of USDA insurance, Mr. Jordan and myself were in the room. When they asked how you're using data to make decisions, I volunteered the fact that as a state official and as a citizen, I had watched Norfolk use data to make good decisions. We have data here. We can use it to make good decisions, and I want to compliment Mr. Fuddy and all the folks who've been doing this for years. This is not a new thing for Norfolk. We just have to use this new data in the best way possible.
And you, Courtney?
I will briefly say I want to reinforce what Rodney indicated because of my looking, and I'm very much focused on the teacher because of my concern of the teacher departures. And so, what we want to do is allow our teachers to feel like they're in a very safe and constructive environment. And when I look at the composite on page four in the middle and highs, the lowest mean composites are safety and student bullying. This is under teacher, followed by feeling safe and morale, which I know we're in the summary. So, we need to focus on those. What is it that we're doing well at the schools where those scores are high? Translate those to schools that they're not so high because we need to stop the bleeding of teachers leaving our school division. And I think if there are a few things that we can do this year to make quick changes, and I don't mean quick as in temporary, but as in systemic and long-lasting, then I think we can make a difference. So, I also say on page 24, there was some really very good sources here. So, I appreciate Mr. Fuddy and others putting these in here, but I'll read. "A positive school environment is a product of a collective effort. The monograph looks at strategies to improve school environment and examines four of its major components: caring relationships, academic environment, structure and safety, and participatory learning." You see safety in all these quotes and all these studies that are coming out. So, I'm very focused on the safety. I hear that from teachers who speak with me in the community. So, I think we can do nothing but yeoman's work on making our teachers feel safe in the environment that they're being asked to teach our students.
Okay. You want to get a final comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could just make a comment to address both Ms. Doyle and Mr. Jordan. You know, a big part of, of what we're doing is, once we look at the data, it comes back to communication. It comes back to the fundamentals of relationships, and it comes back to, this has to be a we problem and not an individual group problem. You know, we talk about, you know, the teachers don't feel safe, but there has to be ownership on the teachers to help create a building that's safe. The same for administrators, the same for every group of employees that we have in a building have to come together and have to come, you know, to create strategies and solutions. So, you know, as we approach this, I would just emphasize the fact that, you know, one of the ways that as executive directors we're looking at it is a collaborative approach where everybody has input, and that comes back to those fundamentals of good communication and relationships.
Brad, and then Will. I just wanted to say that the data provides a great opportunity to find bright spots where the executive directors can work with the principals and their professional learning communities to take the best practices that are in the bright spots and hopefully transfer them and, as Courtney was saying, implement them in the schools that are having more of a challenge. And that, again, that's, that's what leadership's all about, and that's how you create a team.
And I think we can't kid ourselves. There's a lot of layers to this work.
Oh, yeah.
Cultural competence is a big part of that. When you talk about the demographics, about different schools, you know, that, that brings along with it different and unique challenges. And so, there's no cookie cutter approach. What works in one school building may not work in another. And so, I think we have to, really work to understand the dynamic and the demographics and talk about continuous improvement, of course, continuous education, and simply understanding people, from adults to children's behavior. And sometimes it's simple in concept, but not simple in practicing implementation and monitoring and management. I'm not saying that to say we can't get there, but I think we have to understand the complex nature of it as well. Thank you all. Good work. Thank you very much. Okay, 3.03, School Board Policy Committee. Mr. Jordan, you are on.
So, Policy Committee met with Dr. Birdsong.
I'll see that.
Oh, okay. Well, Dr. Birdsong comes back. She's going to help me out. But the, the Policy Committee met, and we're going to meet again. We are, we are making progress. We still wanted to get the communication flow going. And so, Friday, Dr. Birdsong, who is the designated by Dr. King, and Reverend Haywood and I are going to meet and what, we're also going to include Janelle, but she's going to be out on Friday. And so, Janelle is going to provide to Dr. Birdsong kind of an update on where we are in terms of policies and which ones we may feel were from last year, which ones we may feel are more current. And we're going to work on a process to get it up to speed, bring it to the board, and then by October, be able to implement our, our new approaches. So, Dr. Birdsong, anything you want to add to that?
You're exactly right. We have a meeting Friday, and we decided that we, first of all, need to ensure that all of the policies that have been recommended by the SBA for, for changes and revisions, that you've had a chance, an opportunity to explore those recommendations. And so, we want to do some cleanup first and then move forward because at this point, we don't have any additional policies for review since May of 2014.
And, and as part of that, we've also made note, Chair and Vice Chair, in reference to the school naming policy. We'll add that for, to our meeting on Friday for quick action, whatever it is that we do in that regard. And then, Dr. Sevigny had brought to the meeting a review of the community advisory boards. And so, we want to also try to get that out in front because it's going to have some impact on, you know, our CAC, GAC, and other advisory boards that are out there. And so, I know that those two and some others that, that came up, we hope to bring back to you by, by October. But we'll, we'll keep you posted. We are trying to send out notes to the full board to let you know how we're proceeding, and if anybody has any questions. you know how we're proceeding. And if anybody has any questions or suggestions or recommendations for particular items for us to consider that may be coming out of other committees, if you all would just, you know, email Reverend Haywood and I and copy Dr. Birdsong and Janelle, then that way we can make sure it gets on our, on our agenda. So that's all we have. Unless Reverend Haywood, anything else you want to add to that? There you go.
Thank you very much. All right. Out of 2.03, Human Resources. Dr. King?
Out of 2.03, Human Resources will consist of.
3.03, I'm sorry. I've got two on my paper here, but yeah.
Right, should be. Yeah. Should, should consist of hiring update, as well as school year 2014 exit survey results to be presented by Dr. Birdsong. Dr. Birdsong?
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Mrs. Doyle, Dr. King, members of the school board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide an update to you regarding staffing. I think Mrs. Doyle just indicated that we had a lot of work to do this summer with a number of vacancies, vacancies. And so I'd like to publicly acknowledge my team for the outstanding job that they did this summer with staffing our schools. I'm very pleased to share with you this afternoon that all of our secondary positions have been filled, and that is, is unheard of, especially this time of the school year. So I'm, again, very, very proud of the work that my team has accomplished this summer. We do, however, have one long-term guest teacher in the area of mathematics at one of our secondary schools. We have a teacher, a long-term guest teacher, who's highly qualified in the sense of being a long-term guest teacher. She is getting ready to take the praxis, too, so that she can be fully licensed. The principal requested this specific teacher, because she has done an outstanding job for years and years with Norfolk Public Schools. And so we're hoping that she'll be able to be fully licensed by the end of this month. And so that is the only position at this time that we have at the secondary level that is what we would still consider vacant, because we don't have a contracted teacher in that position. We're continuing to work with our elementary positions. We still have a couple of elementary school teacher positions to fill. However, you need to know that on the very first day of school, every child had a highly qualified teacher or long-term guest teacher sitting in front of them. There was no vacant, there were no vacant classrooms on the first day of school. And so we are still working to fill just a couple of our elementary positions. But I would like to focus upon our focus in priority school positions, because we did make that a priority for staffing this school year. So we put many strategies in place to address that. And so with that in mind, I need to share with you that Camp Estella has a kindergarten position. We have a contracted teacher that is going in that position on 9/15. And so that will complete staffing at Camp Estella Elementary School. At Tide Water Park, we had a teacher that decided to resign, but he now wants to rescind his resignation. And so because of family issues, and so we certainly understand that, so we have worked through that issue with this teacher. So that will complete staffing at Tide Water Park. And then we do still have a fifth grade vacancy at Lindenwood Elementary School. And so other than that, all of our other classroom positions are filled at our elementary, at our focus and priority schools. We do have an upcoming job fair Saturday from 10 until 2, and so we're expecting to be able to fill the remaining elementary positions. I also want to share with you that we did have quite a bit of special education teachers that vacated or left, terminated from the district this school year. We probably had close to 45 to 50 vacancies in that area, and so we still have two special education positions to fill. And that's pretty tremendous, because we have close to 400 positions. And so, again, I want to commend my staff for the hard work that they've done over the summer to get our schools filled. And some other areas that you're probably very curious about, and to provide you an update with staffing in those areas, I'd like to bring your attention to math and reading specialists, because that's always kind of a hot topic as we, as it relates to staffing. We only have one, and these were unexpected terminations. We have one elementary reading specialist vacancy and one elementary math specialist vacancy. But other than that, all of the other specialist positions are filled at this time. In terms of interventionist positions, we have staffed at 92.6 percent. So we still have a couple more interventionist positions to fill at this time. As it relates to gifted resource teachers, we still have one position to fill. So my team, again, has done a very, a wonderful job in collaboration with teaching and learning to fill the gifted education positions. And again, we just have one vacancy in that area. We have Valerie Tuck, who was serving a few of our schools, and she was recently promoted to the senior coordinator's position, and so we need to backfill her position. We have identified a person that has been interviewed for that position, but we need to backfill that person's position before we can move forward with full staffing in that area. So are there any questions about staffing?
Question to comment? Yes.
Yes.
What is the typical turnover rate in an urban school system?
It's about a little over 20 percent. So we're way under that as a division.
So we were at 13 percent.
Mm-hmm.
So the typical turnover rate in an urban school system can be as much as 20 percent or more.
Yes.
And Norfolk Public Schools, we were at 13 percent. So I don't think we were bleeding teachers, as the comment was made. I think, I think we were, there was some changeover in loss of teachers, and you never want to lose any teachers that are especially highly qualified and highly effective. We've got to quit beating ourselves up over these issues. I mean, we've got a pretty good system.
Let me just say, I apologize for the word bleeding. Perhaps not the best choice of words, so I respect that comment. But I just wanted to acknowledge the loss of teachers, and we want to stop whatever loss we have.
Yeah, but I, but I also raised the concern that, and I keep hearing this comparison to urban districts, urban districts, urban districts, and I think that's fine. But our children are competing against everyone, and I think we're competing against everyone. And so I agree with you. I don't mean to suggest that somehow we're beating ourselves up. I don't think we should bury our heads in the sand either.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that either. Just strive for, for, like I said, we shouldn't lose any highly qualified or highly effective teachers. It'd be nice if we didn't have any kind of problem like that. But in reality, it's going to happen. I mean, teaching in a, in a, this kind of school system this time.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I taught in a school system that was like Norfolk Public Schools. And it is, it's, it's hard. And unless you, you've got, you've got to be called to it, and you've got to be willing to work for less money than you can get in, in other, other, other industries.
Yeah.
So my point was, instead of thinking that we're, that we have this huge problem, we have an issue that we need to work on as part of continuous improvement. But I think we do a pretty doggone good job. And I, and I appreciate you, Dr. Birdsong, and your staff for doing a yeoman's job of filling those positions. And, and we look forward to increasing, improving the climate and the salary structure so that we retain more.
And what, I was going to say, and with that said, you, I did provide to you the termination report, and I, I think there needs to be a focus on individual schools. Again, if you look at some schools, you will find that the turnover rate is, is, is such that we need to pay closer attention to what's going on in, in those schools. And so, and with that said, I know, Mr. Jordan, one of the questions that you always ask is about the terminations or turnover in schools challenged by retention. And so if you will just take a moment to, to review the report once again, you will see that with the exception of, I believe, two of our schools that we consider challenged by retention, the retention or the termination rate significantly decreased in a lot of the schools. In fact, we had a shared governance team meeting at Tide Water Park this week, and one of the commendations I provided to Dr. Phillips was that she was able to tremendously decrease the terminations in her building. I think it went from like 30.1 percent or so down to 10 percent. And that is just at Tide Water Park. And so that's certainly commendable. So I would just ask that you look at the data, because significant changes in a positive direction have been made by building principals in these schools that are challenged by retention.
Well, Dr. King, two years ago, I told you I was going to ask you this. Next June I am, it'll probably be in May. You know the word.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to ask you, do you have the principal in the school that you want? And this is not easy. So I hope you can keep an eye on the salary, salaries for instructional leaders at other divisions, and as we begin the budget process this year, a process so that we can do what's necessary to remove any barriers, so that Dr. King can have the superlative, the best possible instructional leader at every school.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
Okay. And if I may, I had one more report. I just.
Certainly. Yeah, I always, I always have a one more.
I'll, I'll make it very brief. You've asked for a data relative to the exit survey, and I'm not going to take a whole lot of time about that today, just because this report is typically presented in collaboration with the Department of Assessment, Research, and Accountability. However, it's usually not done at this time, and, you know, they've been busy with assessment results and all of that. And they definitely need a little more time to analyze the data. They provide a very comprehensive report that is generally 50 to 75 pages. But I did want to present the raw data to you so that you could have an idea in terms of what the results would look like. So as they, as they prepare that report, no, you wouldn't be surprised by some of the results. Okay?
Any comments?
The exit survey is focusing on?
When teachers exit from the division.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And this year was the first year that we did it online. And so based on some of the feedback that you provided last year, we changed a lot of the survey items. And so we'll be able to provide you additional information once that report is, has been prepared.
And I know we've asked this question before about the percentage of those leaving that actually complete the surveys. Any idea?
Um, I would say, I don't want to guess right now, but we, we definitely get them in and, and have, I would say that our return rate is, is pretty significant. And I would like to get you a specific data point. I don't want to.
Sure, sure.
To guess at that. But we certainly, when they come in to do their, their paperwork to leave, we get them at that time to fill out the exit survey. And we have computers set up in Human Resources now, so that it's not paper pencil, and they can have their own space, and they can complete it and feel that it's anonymous.
You're not standing over the shoulder by there.
Um, not all the time. No, no, I'm not. Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good reports.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to a quick break here. Let's take a 15-minute break and come back in 10 minutes.